Hey all, we will get started in just about five minutes. We're still waiting for a couple candidates.
Why don't you call it? Answer tails. Tails.
Okay, so Pete and then Dan. So we'll have Pete. Question two and then we'll alter.
We are still waiting for one candidate, but we will start promptly at 6:05 regardless if they are here or not. So four more minutes.
Oh, Futurist. I feel like Tina won't give us the tongue lashing and we forgot.
Hello.
Hi there. No, I'm trying to read all the signs. I could read the handwritten one.
Oh, oh, no worries.
I guess it's not great, you know what I mean?
Trust me, I know what you mean. I understand you.
All right, new candidates.
Yep, T minus one moon, folks.
One moon.
Thank you. Brilliant. All right.
I'm good, Dan, how are you?
Okay.
Oh yeah, a lot of extensions. I really, uh... I do appreciate what they did with the diligence of checking. Sort of an interesting, initial test of being able to have our extension.
All right. Hello, everyone. How y'all doing tonight? All right, we're gonna wait for one minute and then we are going to get started. Thanks, everyone, for being patient. Also, I just want to say welcome. And I will say it again, but welcome. Hello, everyone. Wow, this is a loud mic. Perfect. Even better for you to hear our amazing candidates and incumbents with. So, my name is Cliff. I am the Abbot Cian Policy Manager with Habitat for Humanity of Seattle King Keatask Counties. And I just want to introduce my co-moderator Tiffany McCoy from Real Change. And you will be introduced to all of our amazing candidates up here on the stage in a moment. But first, I want to say thank you for coming here tonight. Because this is where democracy happens, at the grassroots level. And, you know, home means a lot. And in fact, I moved here almost a decade ago. And even that time, Seattle has changed a lot. And some of you have lived here all your lives. And for some of you, like myself, are transplants who have maybe moved here, you know, 20 years ago, may move here in the same timeframe. But in that time, I found that we all have a common story. That we all moved here because we wanted to find a home. We wanted to have a life for ourselves. We wanted to see our families thrive. And we maybe wanted to find some opportunity for ourselves and a place where we belong. And I think that's an important thing to center ourselves on because unfortunately, that there are a lot of people out there tonight that can't say that they've been able to find a home. And every day at Habitat, I listen to homebuyers and homeowners. And also in my previous life, I've heard the same from renters here on Capitol Hill and throughout the city about their inability to find a place that they can call home. And when it comes to Seattle, every single night, as wondrous and as beautiful as our city is, that people sleep outside. That every single day, owner, you know, more neighbors, legacy homeowners, renters, who make our communities bright, vibrant, diverse, are being forced to move elsewhere, either in the area or around the country. And more and more, we're hearing about people being crunched by rising housing prices, nowhere to go, and increasingly strained social safety net. So, I thought it was important to set that tone. Because the questions we're going to ask tonight are going to center around housing, are going to center around the comprehensive plan. Hello. And they are going to mostly focus on how our city is going to grow and what it's going to look like in the next 20 years. And the urgency of the challenge that faces us now. The challenge that we face now is making sure that the problems I just... that I was just talking about are not problems of the same magnitude or greater magnitude in the next 10 years. So, why do I say every... why do I say the next 10 years? Well, actually, we're planning for the next 20 years. So every 10 years, per state law, required to plan out how our state is going to grow, how, where, and what type of housing we're going to provide for our residents, and also how we're going to protect our ecosystem. And for the Complete Communities Coalition, which features the Housing Development Consortium, groups like Real Change, Habitat for Humanity, Futurewise, the Urbanist, NEOP, Tech for Housing, Chief Seattle Club, and the Urban League of Metropolitan Seattle, we are all committed to making sure that the next 20 years, hell, even the next 10 years, that the Seattle we see is far more equitable. It continues to grow with equity, diversity, with ecological sustainability at the center, as well as making sure that all of us can have a place that, you know, we can call home. But enough of my amazing aspirational speeches. Now, I want to introduce our guests for tonight. So we have Councilmember Tim Morales from District Two. We have Ms. Tanya Wu, also running for District Two. Mr. Pete Hanning, who is running in District Six. Mr. Dan, Councilmember Dan Strauss, who's running District Six. Sorry, it's been early. I've only had three cups of coffee today. And then Councilmember Andrew Lewis, who's running for reelection, District Seven. So, a couple of ground rules. Everyone is going to have 90 seconds to answer a question, so, sorry. In that case, I should also mention that we invited everyone, all the candidates who are running here in the City of Seattle, and also the candidates that you see on stage. We thank you. We appreciate you having the time to come out tonight. So please listen, you know, please consider their perspectives. And also, we will be hosting a secondary forum tomorrow with the districts that are not represented on stage tonight. And we will have about seven questions. This counts as my opening. And I will provide a closing in which we can sum everything up. And you will get all the information you need to, you know, follow up with the Complete Communities Coalition. And hopefully, you know, get involved in the process around the comprehensive plan. Because this is our city. This is our home. If we all don't take a part in shaping how it's going to look when, you know, I have a couple little ones and I have a few, you know, a few more astounding grays in my hair, then unfortunately, we may not like what it looks like in the next 20 years. So that's on us, folks. Anyway, I'm going to pass this to my co-moderator, Ms. Tiffany McCoy.
All right, so as Cliff said, this is the first of two forums that the Complete Communities Coalition is putting on. Tonight is our incumbent forum, so that's Districts Two, Six, and Seven. Tomorrow, we have candidates here from Districts One, Three, Four, and Five. So as Cliff said, we invited every candidate. If you don't see a candidate up here, it's because they declined the invitation. Then we also sent those out at the beginning of July. So as Cliff mentioned, we have seven questions. And those are wrapped in an opening and a closing statement for each candidate. We actually tailored the opening and the closing statements to the Comprehensive Plan, Housing and Growth. We all probably have heard a lot of opening and closing statements from the candidates. We wanted to tailor it to the theme of this, so that's what we will be asking. Each candidate has a minute and 45 seconds to answer. There is a clock right down here. If anyone cannot see that, please let us know. It will beep five times at the end. I cannot turn down the volume. It's not piercing, but it is, you know, you can hear it. And then we will go on to the next candidate as well. If Cliff or I do feel that the question that we asked wasn't answered, we will ask just for follow-up to reiterate the question and allow for the audience to understand where their candidate sits on each of our specific questions. So that's where we're at. We'll get closing down at 7:25 for Cliff to do closing statements. But with that, we are going to start with District Two. And we are going to go in a coin flip. Tanya, you are first to start. And we will start with District Two and then go on to the districts. And then we will start at District Six for the question number two. Any questions? Anything I can repeat? Yes.
Yeah.
Yep, exactly.
They're tailored around the comprehensive plans specifically.
Yep, that's good. All are 1:45, yep. All are 1:45 because we have not a bunch of candidates tonight. We are able to give you a little bit more time. So a minute 45 for each question that I ask. The opening statement is a question. Everyone will get a chance to answer that, and then we will go into question two. Okay. So, yes, so Tanya, you are first. And then once I ask this question, I will start the timer. "The comprehensive plan is a 20-year growth plan. What is your vision for housing and land use in Seattle over the next 20 years?"
So my vision for land use and housing is accessibility, not only physically, but also financially. Making sure that people will have choices to choose to be able to stay and live in where they grew up, or if they want to move to other parts of the city. I think that's very important. And not be limited based on finances or other factors, or being forced to leave. Displacement and gentrification is a huge thing in District Two, especially in the Chinatown International District, which was just named one of the nation's most endangered neighborhoods in America. And that is the vision, not to have a single endangered neighborhood within the city. My vision includes allowing for our diverse communities to be able to stay in place. Allowing for 15 minutes to be able to get to a grocery store. Not having a food desert, or not having a heat island. Not having to worry about pollution from, you know, our many freeways, as well as the airports. Having a city where people can grow and thrive and be able to live in for multiple generations and have everybody be able to not worry about where they're going to be in 10 or 20 years. And, you know, we have to act now. We have to do something now. We can't always plan 10 to 20 years down the line because a lot of people, you know, might be moved out or not be here by that time. We have to act now and plan for not only the future, but for the present. Thank you.
Your next Councilmember, Morales? And if you want me to repeat the question, I can. I'll do that. "The comp plan is a 20-year growth plan. What is your vision for housing and land use in Seattle over the next 20 years?"
Thank you. Well, thanks, everybody, for being here tonight. My vision is that we are really setting targets now for what the city looks like in 20 years. I'm really running to stop the displacement that's happening of our residential tenants, of our commercial tenants, and particularly to make sure that our communities of color get to stay here in Seattle. Folks in the Central District, in the CID, in South Seattle, deserve to stay rooted in their communities. And they deserve to be able to build generational wealth to help them stay. So, the comp plan is an important opportunity for us to set that vision for what we want the city to look like in 20 years and to guide our zoning and other regulations that will come afterward. I have three main goals when we start to have this conversation about the comp plan. One is to make sure that we are updating the growth strategy, which is itself contributing to some of the racial inequities that we have had in the city for generations. One is to... the second is to address displacement, particularly to make sure that our small businesses are able to stay in the city and that our residential tenants get access to much more housing and many more different types of housing. And then the last is really to create a sustainable city where our kids can grow up in a healthy Seattle. This is an opportunity for us to set our vision, to get really clear about what our priorities are, and to really start to think about the different systems that we have in the city, whether it's our housing, or transportation, or our environmental regulations. All of those things are interconnected. And it's important that we consider all of them and how we want them to move in the right direction together. Transportation is a huge issue. We talked about that today. So lots of work to do, and I'm looking forward to our conversation. Thank you.
All right, Pete, do you want me to read it again? Okay, go ahead.
Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming. Housing has become such a point of issue when I'm knocking on the doors. I truly believe that housing is a value and something where all should be afforded. When I'm talking with a lot of the small businesses in our community, they're really struggling with finding housing for both themselves and for their employees. And so we really need to put that lens of making sure it's affordable for everyone. Excuse me, I'm sorry. I'm just a little nervous here. The first forum of this candidacy. I'm gonna pass.
He's got a minute left, so I'm gonna do mine and then I'm gonna pass it back to him if he wants it. All right. So this is also my introduction, so I will answer the question. But first, I'd like to introduce myself to you. I'm Councilmember Dan Strauss, representing Fremont, Finney, Green Lake, Greenwood, Crown Hill, Ballard, so many other micro neighborhoods, and I'm excited to get Magnolia back. I work from my... I split my time between my district office at the Ballard Library and City Hall. And my office focuses on three top priorities. And that's addressing public safety, addressing homelessness, and creating the housing that working families can afford. Because the family that I grew up in should be able to afford to live in the Seattle of today and tomorrow. Our last major update to the comprehensive plan, underestimated growth twofold. Said another way, we have had twice as much growth as we planned for. We need to be realistic about our growth. As we are the fastest-growing city in the nation, year over year, I know that there was a year or two that we slipped to like two or three, but still, being the top three is... we're experiencing a lot of growth. I want a Seattle that is affordable, livable, resilient, and equitable. A place for everyone, no matter your economic abilities. I was born and raised in Seattle. I've seen where we've come from. And I see the horizon that has a brighter future than what we have today. Specifically, I want to see more intense density around transit. I want to see strong design standards for the gentle density that we will see in our... through... throughout areas that don't have it today. I want to see more parks, more open space, more trees. Because Seattle is a city of neighborhoods. And I want us to have a 15-minute neighborhood across the city. I stopped talking.
Okay, I'm all set. All right. Hello, everybody. Andrew Lewis, Seattle City Councilmember from District Seven. It's good to see everybody here tonight. Really appreciate the initial prompt because there might not be a bigger body of work that the council that will sit next year will take on than the comprehensive plan. And it is so fundamental to the challenges that we face today. It's fundamental to the challenges that we will face for future generations of the city. You know, housing has to be the strategy for how we overcome so many of the challenges that we're facing, be it climate change, be it affordability, be it street disorder, be it chronic homelessness. Housing is really at the core. You go back in time in the city, you could build micro units. You could build single-room occupancy units. It's not just the quantity, but the type of housing that we were allowed to build. More restrictive now, more regulated now. We are dealing with the problems of... The problems that we are dealing with today were set in motion 10 years ago in the last major update to the major comprehensive plan. Hopefully, with the plan we do next year, we will be setting the stage to solve the problems we are experiencing today. And that is what we need to be doing when we're looking at our long-term planning, increasing the amount of housing supply, increasing the housing that's close to transit, making sure that we have opportunities to realize 15-minute cities and integrate that housing into our transportation plan to emphasize walking and rolling instead of single occupancy vehicle use. This is the vision that we are realizing next year and that we are going to lock ourselves into. And we are going to be facing a choice. Are we going to have a council that is going to lead and make sure that Seattle's a climate leader or a climate follower? The comprehensive plan is what's going to determine it. And I am proud to be the only District Seven candidate that is here tonight and the only District Seven candidate that has mentioned climate in my voter guide statement.
Awesome. Well, thank you very much for those openings. Greatly appreciate that. So for this next question, we're going to start with Mr. Hanning. And then we're going to go to Councilmember Strauss. And then from there, we're going to go to Councilmember Morales, and then Ms. Wu, and then Councilmember Lewis. So, just let me know if you need me to repeat that order again. Notes a lot. Appreciate you joint... I appreciate your participation. And yeah, feel free to ask questions anytime. So, what do you see as the biggest challenges in your district that the comprehensive plan can address?
I think the biggest difficulty will be in terms of people feeling like change is happening at such a fast pace on their block fronts, that either they are going to get priced out of their homes if they're on a fixed income, or that such large units are going to come in and that they're going to put pressure on the way that their neighborhood has felt over the generation in which they've lived there. And so, talking to the constituents about that, I like to remind them that for me, what is more important than the... how a house looks is the quality of the neighbors that are moving into our community. And it's on us to really... And it's on us to really make sure that the character and the quality and the vibrancy of our community is shared to those new neighbors when they move in. But really, it's, change has been hard, and as Dan was alluding to, and as I think we've all seen, this city has grown at such a great rate, you know, far faster than most communities, faster than the city has grown in the last hundred years. We're like a teenager that can't buy another pair of shoes, because the second we get them, we need another pair of shoes that's larger. So it's really just trying to catch up, but also recognize that certain people are really struggling with how that change is happening, and how quickly it's happening.
Excellent, thank you. Councilmember Strauss?
Yeah, can you repeat it once more?
Oh, yeah, for sure.
What challenges do we address?
Oh, yeah, no worries. Can you hear me? Excellent. So what do you see as the biggest challenges in your district that the comprehensive plan can address? Let me know when you ready go.
I mean, it's not just my district, oh, yeah, it's not just my district, it's our whole city. It's the fact that the last comprehensive plan underestimated growth twofold, which has resulted in a city that is increasingly expensive, and pricing out generation, generations, plural. And so the greatest problem that this will solve is creating a space for everyone in this room's kids to be able to live in our city, because right now, that's not possible. You know, I was talking to Dave and Judy in the audience before this, about the emotional toll that Pete was alluding to as well, of watching the neighborhood that I grew up in be torn down, because I grew up in Ballard, and Ballard is not the same neighborhood it was. And today, it is more vibrant. It is, there's more vibrancy throughout the community. The, on my parents' block, when I was growing up, I was mad as heck about the skinny homes going in on the second lots of those, of those homes. I remember being very upset with the people who were building them. And today, the, one of those skinny homes houses my parents', you know, some of my parents' best friends on the block. And also, if those homes had not been built, what would the cost of housing be today? Because those homes were built twenty, thirty years ago. So the greatest challenge that this will address is ensuring that everyone in this room's kids can afford to live in the city, that we'll have neighbors that will become our best friends, and that will... Stop right there.
Excellent, thank you. All right, yes, so councilmember Morales. And just to reiterate before you begin, councilmember Morales, and Ms. Wu, then councilmember Lewis.
Great. Thanks very much for the question, Cliff. I think for District Two, which starts at Yesler Terrace and goes all the way down to Rainier Beach, the huge issue is affordability and the displacement that it's causing. So for, you know, decades now, we've watched people get pushed out of their communities, families get pushed out, businesses get pushed out, and that's the real crux of the issue that the comprehensive plan is going to help us address, because the impact of that displacement is, the impact of that affordability challenge is that people are getting evicted because they can't afford to stay in their homes anymore. That's contributing to homelessness, it's contributing to food insecurity, as families have to move from place to place to place to try to find a place they can afford to live, kids are getting pushed into different schools. So it's incredibly disruptive for us to be a tale of two cities, where the incredibly wealthy are just fine, and everybody else is just going to have to suck it up. We can solve this problem, and the comprehensive plan is an important way for us to do that. So the things that I'm interested in doing, that can make a meaningful impact on reducing displacement and increasing affordable housing production, take land out of speculation to, that's why I'm pushing for social housing, so that we have permanent affordability across the city. I don't know how many more questions we'll have, but I'm introducing connected communities legislation that is an affordability pilot, so that we can start to see social housing across the city. We need to create opportunities to build community wealth, to build homeownership, to allow small businesses to purchase commercial property rather than being tenants, and we need to make sure that there are more homeownership opportunities, particularly for communities of color, to reduce the racial wealth gap.
Excellent, thank you very much.
So first of all, I don't think many local community members really understand what the comprehensive plan is, and what its goal is to do. Speaking to a lot of members in the Chinatown International District, and many communities of color along District Two, and small in community, like, people, there's, I think there needs to be more outreach and engagement, especially from our neighborhoods that will be affected. And, you know, many people will say, oh, it doesn't matter, I won't be here in twenty or ten years. And no, it does, your children will be affected. So how do we get the word out? How do we go and do the outreach and engagement, especially with, to people who are not, who are not, English language is not their first language, our communities refugees and immigrants who now call this place home, they belong here, we need to do the outreach and engagement. And with that said, I do agree that especially in District Two, displacement and gentrification is huge. I mean, we look at the Central District, in nineteen seventies, the black population there was at seventy-five percent, and today, it's at fifteen percent. District Two is the majority minority, and so how do we retain that status, it being one of the most diverse districts in the nation? And slowly, we're losing that title, and we have to make a concerted effort to make sure that people who live there can work there, that our many celebrated jewels and legacy businesses are able to stay and operate. As we saw during the pandemic, that really accelerated all of these detrimental efforts, and we saw many of our businesses close, and many people had to move out of the city, and that was just simply heartbreaking. And now that we're rebuilding, and that we've learned from our experiences, I think going forward, we could take what we know and put this into a comprehensive plan, making sure that we bring it back down to neighborhood level, and get inputs, and make sure we do the outreach to those communities of color.
Excellent, thank you very much. And councilmember Lewis, you're up.
Thank you so much. The comprehensive plan being our constitution of land use planning in the city, determining what we can build where, how dense can we build, what uses are allowed in what places, is it just residential, is it commercial, is it industrial? Just to give a quick cursory overview for the audience members who might be confused about what the comprehensive plan is. Looked at the, in that respect, I'm going to say the biggest problem in my district the comprehensive plan can make progress on is chronic homelessness. Overly restrictive housing policy is something that I think it's fair to say, chronic homelessness is the tax that we pay for having overly restrictive policies in terms of how dense we can build, what we can build where. And we pay for that over time. Homelessness is typically thought of as a challenge of civic failure. It's not, it's a problem of civic success. It's a problem of the fact that more people want to move here, we're one of the fastest-growing cities in the country. There is more competition for housing. My doorbell somebody recently, who recently moved to the city of Seattle to work for a tech company, got an affordable rental apartment, thinking they would quickly move up to buy. They're still in that apartment. As long as they're in that apartment, they're competing for that space with voucher-supported placements for nonprofits. They're competing for that space with people who are working in the service sector and have to commute for miles and miles and miles to get to the city. If we have more housing supply, and we have diversified types of housing, modes of housing, and an increased emphasis on the ways we can get to work that don't involve single occupancy vehicles, we can start making progress on chronic homelessness in the city of Seattle. It's tough, it's like a frog in a pot, it's a slow-burning thing. Ten years ago, when we planted the seeds of over-restrictive housing policy in our comprehensive plan, we didn't know it was going to lead to our homelessness crisis. We have the plan to fix that next year, and make sure that the next time we consider the comprehensive plan, chronic homelessness is not one of our challenges.
Thank you. So our third question, and I'll tell you the order, councilmember Lewis, you're going to answer this first, and then councilmember Strauss, Mr. Hanning, Ms. Wu, and then councilmember Morales. The third question is, what types of new housing and amenities would you like to see in your neighborhood? Please be specific. And councilmember Lewis, you're up.
Thank you so much. You know, we need to have more housing options in addition to housing density in the city of Seattle. I think we made a big mistake as a city when we overly limited the ability to build microunits, units that might be as small as a hundred and twenty-five feet per unit, very small units, but have their own bathroom, can rent at market rate for nine hundred dollars or less a month, can provide an opportunity for people who, not too long ago, like me, who were young and single in the city of Seattle, we are a majority renter city, we are a majority, thirty-five-year-old average age of the people that are in our city. We have a lot of people who would be able to take an opportunity, like a microunit or a single-room occupancy unit, accumulate and save money to aspire to homeownership. We have imposed middle-class values on all of our housing stock, because we assume everyone's going to be able to afford a middle-class lifestyle. That is not necessarily true in a bustling and highly competitive and hot-charge city like the city of Seattle is. So having more variety of housing type would be very helpful. I think that we also, you know, in my neighborhood, we put a premium on parking in a lot of places in the city of Seattle. You know, I, until very recently, was carless, I aspire to being carless again, you know, when my daughter moves out of the house right on time at eighteen years old, as we all know she will, just joking on that, for the parents here. But the, the opportunity cost of putting in housing mandatory for a certain number of units is space that could be used for something else, like an additional living unit. In my case, I would like to not have a parking space for my house, and have an office or some other kind of space. But right now, we force builders to put it in regardless of what consumer choices.
Thank you. Councilmember Strauss, do you want me to repeat?
I abbreviated that, what type of housing I want to say.
What types of new housing and amenities would you like to see in your neighborhood? Please be specific.
Thank you. Well, I started in my opening remarks about trees, open space, and parks, because as we become more dense, we also need a place to go outside and play. We also need the benefit of our trees to clean our air, keep our communities cool in the summer, and potentially warmer in the winter. But you asked me about what types of housing, and I want to see more condominiums, places that people can buy, that, especially as my parents' generation ages in place, that they have a flat, level unit that they can buy and downsize into. We also need these flat units for parents of young children, who are building their equity, and they're, if they're starting with a starter home, a starter home might be out of reach these days, but a starter condominium might not be. And so specifically, you know, look, everyone's heard me gripe about townhomes, yes, I love the density that they create, yes, I think they're ugly, and yes, it's okay to have both opinions, just sharing that out there here. But what they don't have is a flat living space for people to age in place or raise their children. I want to see us have more duplexes and triplexes. If you look at Eighth Avenue and Third Avenue in District Six, they are chocked full of duplexes, triplexes, quads, and, or actually, fiveplex, in small apartment buildings that fit the neighborhood character, and are currently illegal to build, because they are in neighborhood residential areas that do not allow duplexes, triplexes, and quads, and small apartment buildings. Just look across the street from Ross Park.
I share councilmember Lewis's desire to have more microhousing. When I was running my own business, I had a few of my employees who were quite happy having the opportunity to have microhousing, and I think it is a huge step in getting back to having a huge diversity of the housing stock in our communities. And we, we also, I think, need to have an honest conversation, yes, we need to do away with all the parking requirements, but there is concern for those who are already living on those block fronts, that it is just going to mean more congestion of parking in their communities. And so I would like to encourage, when a fourplex or a fiveplex go up, that perhaps that fiveplex has a car share, and that they maybe provide a space or two for two vehicles for five business buildings and five homes, so that we're really looking at that mixture of sharing those resources. My wife and I are down to, we're a one-car family, I share Andrew's desire to be a no-car family, but right now, it's a really important tool. The other thing I really would like to see, one of the amenities, is it's not just housing. You know, my, my local coffee shop is Lighthouse Coffee Roasters in Upper Fremont, and that currently would not be zoned as a business if it were trying to open today because of its location. And we need to allow for small businesses also to help with the character of our communities, to help with that fifteen-minute walk shed. And so I think it's really important that we're not only talking about housing, but we're talking about all the different ways in which we use our neighborhoods.
We need all types of housing, but for specifically District Two, I would like to see more workforce housing, which is something my family has done, the Louisa Hotel. After a devastating fire in 2013, rebuilt for workforce housing, which allows for our tenants only have to pay a percentage of their income as rent, so no one has to afford, can afford a rent that, no one, doesn't have to worry about, you know, being able to afford a rent they cannot pay. So I would like to see more of that housing being implemented throughout the city, especially in our, you know, historic buildings that need to be up to earthquake, as well as fire-safe codes. How do we rebuild those buildings so they will last for another hundred more years? And, you know, I think what my family did with workforce housing and historic building is a good model for that, and I would like to see more of that in the city. And we definitely need more milla housing, more, more opportunities for people to be able to purchase their own homes, especially people coming from communities of color. How do we work with, I guess, nonprofits and PDAs to provide not only more senior housing, but more land ownership or housing ownership opportunities, and grants or trusts? And especially, how do we, you know, for our seniors, our most vulnerable populations, how do we create more housing for that group of people who, that's accessible, and that is in the district? And in terms of amenities, I would like to see, like everyone has said, more ground floor commercials, small businesses, they're really the heart of our communities, they're a safe place for everybody. I'd like to see, you know, a local hardware store in our neighborhoods, and a cafe would definitely be welcome, because they're definitely social centers for not only our elders, but for our young people as well.
Okay. So thanks, everybody, these are all great answers. We need way more housing, we need many more types of housing, we also need many more types of homeownership opportunities, so I'm also interested in, you know, cooperative housing, townhomes, condos, different ways that people can own housing, including social housing, which, as I've said, is something that I'm working on. I'll say, you know, I'm, I am part of the sandwich generation, so I have senior parents, my stepdad has dementia, finding a place for them that was safe for him, that had only one floor where they could access the outdoors, was really challenging. They ended up going to Olympia, which makes me sad. I also have kids in Seattle Public School, and, you know, finding places for our kids to be able to recreate, to be outside in our neighborhood is really important to me, so I'm really interested in terms of amenities, in childcare centers that people can walk to, grocery store, corner store people can walk to, a healthcare pharmacy. And I would really like to see a pedestrianized street in every commercial neighborhood, and every neighborhood to have a commercial space, so that we all have a place to go and gather. Occidental Park, Roberto Meistas Plaza, you know, the Ballard Commons, well, that's a park, but, but there are places that we can turn into pedestrianized streets, so that our community has a place to go and rebuild the social cohesion that we lost during COVID. And the last thing I'll say is, it is important to me that as we think about this comp plan, that we're creating a network of well-resourced neighborhoods, where everybody is within a fifteen-minute walk shed to the things they need, because kids come back home. My twenty-three-year-old just came back from college, and he's living back upstairs again, so.
Okay, well, first of all, thank you for all of those amazing answers. Also, councilmember Morales, you are up first for this question, and then we'll go with Ms. Wu, and then we'll go with councilmember Lewis, and then Mr. Hanning, and then councilmember Strauss. So what strategies should the city prioritize to prevent displacement?
Oh, well, I feel like I already talked about that, but I think, you know, for me, this is, this is why I got into running for city council. I'm trained as a neighborhood planner, I worked for years in community economic development, and particularly in food security issues, and that's sort of the intersection of public health and community economic development. It's important that, you know, these, these sectors are always in the same communities, and if you look at a map, you can see why, because this is where there's high, you know, health disparities, low economic opportunity. The way we start to address all of that is to make sure that we are keeping people rooted in their community, and that means addressing affordability. The comp plan can do that by creating more opportunity for more kinds of housing at different income levels. And then we also need to make it okay to have commercial spaces throughout our housing communities, and make it... working really hard on community wealth-building strategies. So I would love to see us set that work up for success by ensuring that the comp plan allows for very mixed uses within all of our neighborhoods rather than putting businesses, you know, several blocks away, bus road, bus routes several blocks away from single-family homes. And then the last thing, oh, shoot, I had one more point and I lost it. Anyway, I think, you know, it's really important that the comp plan allow for the kind of changes that can create more vibrant, healthy neighborhoods, and the work that we can do through the comp plan can set the stage for allowing those rules.
Awesome. Thank you. Ms. Wu?
So from my understanding, and I could be wrong, but I don't believe the comprehensive plan, the first five choices don't even really tackle the displacement and gentrification issues that we're seeing in the district. There's no direct reference, no direct plan. And I think that's egregious, and we need to do something to, especially to tackle this huge issue, because displacement is at unprecedented rates. I believe, looking at our zoning, we have lots of racist zoning happening, especially around our communities of color, especially in the CID. What I'm seeing happening is that, you know, they've upzoned to 17 stories, and like these little family associations, they're building burns, and they have to sell for $8 million to an international developer instead of being able to rebuild their family building to offer up to mom-and-pop shops. You know, an international developer buys it and wants to build a 17-story Marriott hotel. And that is something we need to tackle head-on, especially looking at zoning. I think we need to bring it back down to the neighborhood level because every single neighborhood is different, and the neighborhood plans have not been updated since 2000. So, I mean, we don't have to go through the whole arduous tenure process of updating these neighborhood plans, but at least go out to the communities and the different neighborhoods and just do the outreach and engagement to see what people want to see. And, you know, we have these different different neighborhood plans that tackle gentrification, displacement, and not only that, but public safety as well as other things. We need to listen, and we need to fund those plans, and we need to carry out those plans that these neighborhoods have. I mean, we're not inventing the wheel here, and this, we have been discussing these issues for a very long time, and would like to bring it back down to neighborhood level, listen to people, and bring it down to, like, be able to incorporate that into the feedback for the plan, be able to add those elements where we could directly tackle that issue.
Excellent. Thank you. And so Councilmember Lewis?
Thank you so much. So displacement, I'll start by talking about ways the comprehensive plan can be responsive to displacement concerns, and maybe mention a few others that aren't necessarily within the comprehensive plan, but things we can think about as a city. You know, to some of the remarks Tanya just made in reference to the Chinatown International District, if your comprehensive plan only really allows development and growth in 25% of the city, which under our previous comprehensive plan, urban-village strategy, basically it does, you are going to hypercharge the competition, the displacement, from that select one quarter of the city that is the only place that you can develop. Part of the plan has to be broadening, expanding the opportunity to increase gentle density, to increase density to parts of the city that hitherto have been completely locked out of being fundamentally places that can welcome more families, can welcome more urban planning. It takes pressure off of the sites that over the course of the last 20 years have really taken the brunt of increased growth. You know, I'm not anti-growth, but if you're concentrating all of it in one quarter of the city, there are going to be negative impacts. Expanding the places where we can grow is going to reduce the impacts on some of the places that historically have taken the biggest share of the growth, and to that extent, some of the biggest challenges associated with growth. There are other things we can pursue, like policies around pursuing land trusts to increase the amount of community ownership over land, right-of-first refusal in certain cases with certain buildings to give opportunities to tenants and residents to purchase a building before that building could be maybe converted into condos for new occupants and displace the existing ones. Those are some strategies outside of the comprehensive plan, but fundamentally, it comes down to where are we planning for growth and where aren't we?
Awesome. Thank you very much. So Mr. Hanning?
In terms of some of the strategies, displacement is really something that we do need to take a really hard look at. I am a fan of us looking at providing financial assistance to people who are in market-rate housing to keep them in place, because we know how important it is to stop people from becoming unhoused. We really are in this inflection point where we are in such a crisis. You know, the reason why Dan and I's District, District Six now has Magnolia is, just to what Andrew was saying, District Seven grew at such a higher rate, and the rest of the city, or at least parts of my district, didn't really accommodate as much growth as other districts did in other neighborhoods. And so we do need to also make sure that we are looking at the whole city equitably. Obviously, that is a scary thing to hear for certain people in certain communities. I'm supportive. I, you know, the Magnolia Village is now part of District Six, and I think it could become even more vibrant, and it is a lovely community. But an even more vibrant community if we allow for more density there and mixed use there. It's on a bus route, they have a farmer's market, they have a grocery store, they have banks, they have a fire station. It really is an area where we should be looking at creating a much denser community. But we have to be willing to have those conversations, and as Tanya was saying, going out into the community, recognizing the diversity and the differences of each community and what they what they hold dear and what their priorities are.
So I, so Mr. Hanning, before we go on to Councilmember Strauss, I just want, I was hoping you could take maybe about 50 seconds or so and just clarify. So beginning your statement, you mentioned something about financial assistance as a part of prioritizing preventing displacement. Just within the context of the comprehensive plan and what can be done within this process, can you explain a little bit more of how financial assistance would factor in there or what that would look like?
Well, I think we would have to make sure within the budget that it was something that could be doable, but we do know that holding people in their housing and helping them for at least a couple of years really stabilizes them. And I think that, you know, we are, we're in a place where the the rate of what it costs to move also is so hard on on people, whether it's moving to a new school, whether it's finding their community again, that it really is, the onus is on us to make sure that they can be stable.
Okay. Thank you. And now Councilmember Strauss?
Thanks. I'm going to back Pete up on this one because candidly, none of the examples that have been put forward so far are contained within the major update to the comprehensive plan. Because again, the major update to the comprehensive plan is an allowance to go to a certain level of growth. There is then legislation that is later and different that allows for that zoning to go into place. So let's say we allow for growth up to this point, that does not mean that we're going to have growth up to that point. It says we're allowed to, and then we have to pass follow-up legislation so we could pass this much growth the first year, or this much growth the second year, third year, fourth year, to get to that growth level. It's not a mandate, it's an allowance. So I'm giving everyone, no answers up here are within the comprehensive plan, and they are joined with the major update to the comprehensive plan because when we change zoning, it has unintended consequences. Displacement is one of them. The neighborhood that I grew up in, again, way more vibrant than it was when I was growing up, and the cost of that was we did not have good anti-displacement strategies in place. And so half the people, more than half the people that I grew up with, cannot afford and were pushed out of the neighborhood. With 20 seconds left, I'm going to say that we need more homeownership opportunities. We need more income-based rental options, much like the Luisa Hotel that Tanya talked about, and the social housing options that Councilmember Morales talked about. When we look at ownership opportunities, Spuds in Green Lake sold their land and were able to return because they knew how to do that, and we need the city to provide that knowledge.
Awesome. Thank you, and thank you for making that clarification. I just wanted to make sure it was kind of clear for everyone what your answers were, you know, what they related to, so.
All right. For this one, Councilmember Strauss here first, Mr. Hanning, Ms. Wu, Councilmember Morales, and then Councilmember Lewis. Do you support including density and/or height bonuses for affordable and social housing in the next comprehensive plan? Please explain.
Yes. Sorry, the clock started a little late, so I took a couple of seconds. Yes, I mean, height and floor-area ratio bonuses for being part of the solution are commonplace throughout our land use code. We see it for religious institutions. We see other public benefits on the streetscape being provided for additional height bonuses. This is a very, it's not only that we get more public amenities for these bonuses. In this case, I think your question was affordable housing and social housing, but then we also get more mandatory housing affordability payments. So because I was able to answer that question in 30 seconds, I'm going to go back to the last one about displacement. What I was saying about Spuds in Green Lake is that they sold their property and were able to return in a condoized fashion, I think they actually pay rent, but they were able to negotiate that rent in such a way that we have now housing above them that is actually permanent supportive housing. Spuds gets to stay at Green Lake, we still get to eat delicious fish and chips, and they get to stay in place. But not everyone knows how this works, and so we need to have that knowledge, being able to be freely dispersed and in multiple languages. People talked about land trusts, absolutely. Government-owned land needs to be used to its highest and best ability to to build affordable housing. And when we talk about affordable housing, it's not the affordable housing of the 1960s for people at the low end of the economic spectrum. This is for the people bagging your groceries, serving your coffee, and doing everyday jobs in our city.
I'd be surprised if not everyone said yes, yes. For sure, we need to make allowances and increase our housing stock, especially for those folks who are our first responders, our teachers, those who are working in healthcare, and also those who are on the lower economic spectrum. One of the buildings that I, in Fremont, it is a commercial building, but we gave a height allowance to, is right along the George Washington Memorial Bridge, otherwise known as Aurora Bridge. And by giving them more height, they agreed to do a setback. And then within that, the environmental improvements that were done with bioswales and retention, capturing around 99% of the polluted water coming off the bridge. And so there is a lot of ways that we can get win-wins out of creating more open space for those communities so that there is playground or a yard in which they can recreate or be with their animals. So I do very much support that.
I do support affordable and social housing height bonuses. And I begin, I began to think in areas like where that might be restricted, like in historic districts, possible near places like the Seattle Center. But in those cases, I think allowing social and affordable housing to be able to sell their air rights to help fund their projects would be beneficial. And so, yes, I totally support this idea, and I think it's, zoning is very different in so many different neighborhoods, and I think having to look at those neighborhoods' requirements and restrictions and being able to understand that and seeing how that fits with affordable and social housing, and being able to sell unused stories of air rights above the building to help fund their projects and allowing other projects in the vicinity to build higher, it's, it's, I think it's helpful in a way, in not only funding, but also in building and making the performer work and being able to afford more affordable and social housing at a better rate when it comes to also workforce housing. When we were building workforce housing in the early, like mid-2000s, like 2010, 2015, we were able to fit in 40 to like 80% AMI. But now the workforce housing I'm seeing that comes out is at 50% AMI. This is average median income, and the average median income, I believe, is $120,000 a year, which is a lot. And so, so yes, that's the short answer.
Yes, I support density bonuses. I think it's important to, as I was saying before, that we're legalizing as many types of housing as possible, condos, townhomes, cottages, fourplex, duplex. But it's also important that we allow more five- and six-story buildings as well. When it comes to the bonus aspect of this, the key here is what do we get in return for giving that bonus? What do we, what does the public benefit that we accrue from this? And so, you know, that's what we really need to be thinking about. It's why I was, I was talking earlier about my Community Connections legislation that we are introducing. I think it'll put us closer to these goals. So it does allow density bonuses, it allows floor-area ratio bonuses, in exchange for 30 to 120% AMI within each building. So the idea here is that we allow people, we really have to stop isolating low-income people in particular buildings or in particular neighborhoods. The key here is allowing people to live in whatever part of the city they want, to be able to find something that they can afford. In exchange for that, you can get additional floor or an additional two floors, or even exemption from design review. So that's the goal. It would allow for commercial space on the ground floor, it would allow for us to create those walk sheds where there are more amenities within a particular neighborhood if each building has something like that. And it really is important, this particular piece of legislation not just requires the income spectrum, but it also requires that the units be built in areas where historically there have been racial covenants, and the goal there is to make sure we're pushing opportunity for everyone everywhere.
Councilmember Lewis?
Thank you so much. So yes, I mean, a short answer at the top, definitely support height and bulk incentives for affordable and social housing. I think generally, as we look to the comp plan next year, taking full advantage of our very, very strong regulatory powers over land use to confer additional value and to confer additional leeway for building more affordable housing stock is something we need to look into. In addition to giving good incentives for good public benefits, like structurally affordable housing, I think we should also look at ways that we can have innovative incentive programs for things like allowing affordable unreinforced masonry buildings to retrofit and make sure that they can resist an earthquake by conferring transferable development rights on those buildings and allowing them to sell those transferable development rights in order to reinforce the building, and reciprocally allow increased density in a part of the city that purchases those air rights above the building to build higher in certain areas where we want to build higher in the comprehensive plan. I think that we could also look into ways that we can incentivize office-to-housing conversions in places where it makes sense with a similar policy. It can be expensive and difficult to demolish an existing office building that could be a good candidate for a conversion, but conversion is also expensive. If you confer a transferable development right on a site where we increase the value of the air rights in the comprehensive plan, you can allow that builder to use that new value to convert it to new housing.
I think I was so excited for your next question, I almost forgot to pick up the microphone. And this one is, I'm going to lie, it's my favorite. So we are, here's the order we're going to go in. So going to go with Councilmember Lewis first, and Mr. Hanning, then Councilmember Strauss, Councilmember Morales, and then Ms. Wu. Sound good? All right. So state law under HB 1110 allows cities to preserve limited amounts of single-family residential land. Are there any parts of Seattle that you think should not be upzoned, and if so, why? So start with Councilmember Lewis.
Thank you for that question. So I think House Bill 1110 is a floor, not a ceiling, is the first thing I'm going to say at the front. I hope I didn't step on your next question, lightning round, floor or ceiling, HB 1110. But to that point, what I would say is I don't think... I hope I didn't step on your next question, lightning round, floor or ceiling, HB 1110. But to that point, what I would say is, I don't think we should be exempting any part of the city from the regulations under HB 1110, or the, rather, the deregulations impact of HB 1110. I do think that the density mandates envisioned by HB 1110 are fairly modest in a lot of respects. And actually, to some respects, are reverting Seattle back to a time where you used to be able to build, you know, duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes in any part of the city. You know, when I'm doorbelling in Queen Anne, which is part of my district, I find tons and tons of non-conforming fourplex buildings that are right in the middle of our neighborhoods. I myself live in a duplex, share a wall with my neighbor. It helped us aspire to home ownership, the fact that a duplex was built in my community in 2006. It has reached an age where my wife and I, as missing middle buyers, were able to purchase it. That is something that shouldn't be rare for families like mine. That should be something that any aspiring family that wants to put down roots in the city of Seattle, not get displaced from the city of Seattle, and wants to be able to work and live in the same city. The only way we can make that a reality is by, in this comprehensive plan, prioritizing those kinds of housing choices so that, you know, 20 years from now, another family like mine can find that kind of opportunity. And that means implementing HB 1110 in the entire city.
Okay. Thank you very much. And now, Mr. Hanning.
Thank you. I also, I'm very for having HB 1110 throughout the entire city. And I think that what the state did for us was a real, we owe them a huge thank you because for too long, the city of Seattle has actually been taking too much of the growth pressures in our state around housing. And this actually was a requirement that the rest of the region, especially our neighbors, our cities right around us, that they needed to also participate in building more housing stock. But at the same time, when we look at our own city, we all share in this responsibility. And it would be, I think, just, it would not be, it would be unconscionable for me to think that certain neighborhoods would be able to block off that kind of development because really, we're talking about adding really appropriate housing into every neighborhood. So I am very supportive of it when I am on those doors. It is one of the areas where sometimes I get some pushback, and I'm okay with that because I really believe strongly that we need to have more housing in every community.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Now, Councilmember Strauss.
Thank you, Cliff. The only place that I would consider using this is as one of the anti-displacement strategies because we know that throughout our city, as we have grown and rezoned, one of the reasons that the displacement has occurred in those places is because we rezoned very small areas, right? And so the pressure was on that very small area to grow bigger, faster, and displaced the people living there. If this can be part of the strategy to prevent displacement of historically marginalized or communities that have not been able to build generational wealth, then that's where it should be utilized. And that, for me, is the benefit of having it as an option because having anti-displacement strategies accompany the major update to the comprehensive plan, there are so many different things that we have to do to prevent displacement. And so there's not a single solution. There is many, many, there are many, many solutions that we have to implement. And if this 25% is one of those strategies, that's something that we need to be clear-eyed about. But that's, and I believe that's the intention of this 25% option because we need to have every tool in the toolbox to prevent displacement.
Thank you, Councilmember Strauss. I'm going to ask a follow-up on that one. Which single-family areas, then, would you remove to not be upzoned based on House Bill 1110?
Well, that's a great question. And as the draft environmental impact statement has not even been released, and there is a long, long process that, I see Hannah Creek booing me in the audience, that there is then a long process after, so let's just take a step back, right? So we are about a month or so away from the draft environmental impact statement being released. From there, we will then have public outreach, comment, and analysis that will lead to a final environmental impact statement. And then from there, we make zoning changes, right? And so, the question is, where do I think that that should be today? I don't know because we haven't done that analysis yet. And that's the pathway that we're on. I'm just a very transparent person, so you asked me the question and I told you what I thought.
Yeah, which single-family zone you would protect? Yes, that was the question. We can move on. Councilmember Morales.
Me? It's me? Okay. This is a really critical first step in legalizing duplexes, fourplexes across the state. I think this particular bill is going to be really important to helping address the housing crisis that is not just Seattle's, and we can't do it by ourselves. So that's an important first step. And I think it allows us to really move past the debate of whether we should allow duplexes and fourplexes in every neighborhood and just get straight to making it happen. With regard to where we should not allow the upzone to happen, I know there are a couple of neighborhoods that are sort of carved out in Seattle. My understanding is that because of existing homeownership association contracts, there is a question about whether the state can impose this change. My understanding is also that it very well can impose the change. And so I know that it's not perfect. The bottom line is no, I don't believe that parts of the city should be carved out. I think every neighborhood needs to help answer the question of how we address the housing crisis in the city, including Broadmoor and Laurelhurst and wherever else. I'll be interested to see what your candidates tomorrow say about that. But, you know, this is, this is a serious problem, and everybody needs to do their share to address the problem, not just Seattle, and not just some Seattle neighborhoods. We need to make sure that across the city, people have access to economic opportunity, to home ownership opportunity, and to basic affordable housing opportunity.
Awesome. Thank you very much. And Ms. Wu?
I'm so sorry, could you repeat the question?
Yeah, sure. So, state law under HB 1110, which was recently passed in the last session, allows cities to preserve limited amounts of single-family residential land. Are there any parts of Seattle, specifically any neighborhoods, any parts of Seattle, that you think should not be upzoned? If so, why?
I support HB 1110. I believe, yeah, we need to build more housing in all parts of the state. But I do want to entertain the question that Councilmember Strauss mentioned regarding places in danger of gentrification displacement. Pewds on Sage has released a gentrification map, or disaster gentrification map, of all the places that are in danger of gentrification displacement. And they say that the pandemic was a disaster event. So I think we need to really carefully look at that map that kind of outlines in South Seattle the places that are in danger of this. And how do we protect those communities from predatory homebuyers, especially protecting our Black community members, our Asian community members, Brown community members, who might not understand the process or are dealing with high property taxes, or maybe a death in the family? And so how do we protect communities of color from large developers, international developer, national developers buying their properties and then turning it into duplexes, quadplexes, and charging millions? How do we allow for homeownership to remain in our community, within our community members, and allow for a community to dictate how they want to see their communities evolve?
Excellent. Thank you very much. So we're going to move on to a closing statement. And just like before, the question, or rather, your closing statement should be interwoven within this question, right? So take a second if you need to, but also, again, thank you very much for participating. So I'll just let rip. So what are the two concrete items on the comprehensive plan that you are going to pursue if elected to City Council? So I'll say that, oh, sorry. And also, just to be clear about the order. So we're going to go in the order of Ms. Wu, Councilmember Morales, Councilmember Lewis, Councilmember Strauss, and then Mr. Hanning. So, do you need me to repeat the question, or I'm good? Okay. Excellent. So, Ms. Wu.
Oh, can you repeat?
Oh, sorry. Yes, my bad. So, what are the two concrete items on the comprehensive plan that you are going to pursue if elected to the City Council? Just let me know whenever you're ready to start.
Say that again.
Yeah. So, and I can clarify if you need to, but what are two of the concrete items, or two speci, yeah, I know. What are two concrete items on the comprehensive plan that you are going to pursue if elected or re-elected to City Council?
I'm in a few minutes.
It's okay. If you'd like, we could come back to you, switch your order a bit, if you want. Just let me know when you're ready to start. Go ahead, Ms. Wu.
Well, there is one item I would like to see more of and directly addressed in the comprehensive plan, and that's gentrification displacement. It's not in options 1 through 5. And I know there is a lot of talk about doing away with the design review process, but sometimes I feel like that's the only process where communities have a voice in terms of development that they are not, or have questions about, or not getting the proper outreach or engagement. So I'd like to see more outreach and engagement, more looking and outreach neighborhoods especially, and more information in the plan directly addressing gentrification displacement and, you know, I know having more community centers and more small businesses, but how are we going to do more to make sure that people are not going to get pushed out?
Excellent. Thank you very much. Now, Councilmember Morales.
Thank you. So there are, I should start by saying, I've already submitted several amendments for the comp plan for next year. These are things that I, we do an annual update every year, and so I had submitted several. And the conversation with the planning department was that those are things that were really within the purview of the bigger update. So some of the things that I submitted already include the things I've already talked about, which is making sure that we are allowing for more commercial, more commercial enterprise in our neighborhoods so that, you know, lots of our neighborhoods have a little commercial business node, but not all. So increasing the ability to do that and making sure that they are better connected is one thing. We've also looked at the, so the comp plan has several different chapters, if you will. Housing is one, but transportation is another. And looking at how we can create more pedestrian-friendly, a more pedestrian-friendly city. The South End has almost 60% of traffic fatalities in the city, so I'm very interested in more pedestrianized access and safer ability for our people to navigate around the community. And then the third thing is really around climate action. So we heard in the Transportation Committee today about the transportation plan and the real goals around safety, but also around how the city is moving in a direction to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions. And there's a lot of work to do to make sure that our transit corridors, our bus routes, the materials that we use to build are all moving us in the right direction to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. And so that is another piece that we'll be working on in the comp plan.
Awesome. Thank you very much. All right. So, Councilmember Lewis, you're up.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Strauss. So the first thing I would say is prioritizing a comprehensive plan that emphasizes 15-minute neighborhoods. And, you know, I'll just say that I used to be one of those people who truly believed that when it comes to climate policy, electric cars would save us. It ignores, you know, I was wrong in that respect because it ignores the lifestyle that has gone along with having a car regardless if that car is electric or not. And orienting our city around cars has candidly not been great for our quality of life in having those options to run errands on a bike or on foot as an alternative. So having that emphasized in our planning. We've been here before. All of us have neighborhoods where we have a weird, non-conforming house that looks like it used to be a grocery store. It looks that way because it used to be a grocery store. Or we have a weird, non-conforming building that used to be a small commercial office building with a law officer and accounting firm in it. It's because it used to be something like that. Now it's a home, it's been converted to that use. It's been converted to that use because we concentrated all of our commercial uses in urban centers a long time ago in a comprehensive plan. I think that we have to do a little bit of going back to the future, and that's the concept in comprehensive plan option 5, which I support, which includes the neighborhood anchor as one of the components. Neighborhood anchor is basically a small commercial district that can be located closer to where people live. I would also like to pursue, as we discussed earlier, those incentives for affordable housing as an ingrained part of our planning assumptions in terms of where we want to put the growth, height, and bulk in our comprehensive plan, and make sure that those incentives actually have a place to go when we enact them.
Awesome. And now, Councilmember Strauss.
Thank you. And to answer Tiffany, your question about the 25% directly, the neighborhood would have to be historically marginalized and have a high risk of displacement. So what, which of those 25%, I don't know, but I just wanted to be very direct with you, using part of my time to address that. The two things that I want to see are the re-legalization of duplexes, triplexes, quads, small apartments. I was talking about 3rd Avenue Northwest and 8th Avenue Northwest that are lined with duplexes that fit within the community, that feel like the community. The small apartment buildings that are across from Ross Park that feel like the neighborhood, it's because they are. And the way that we get there is through good and strong design standards. Now, I made a joke earlier about liking the density of townhomes but thinking that they're ugly. And one of the reasons that they're oftentimes ugly is because there are not strong design standards. There are duplex, or there are townhomes on 60th and 20th that used reclaimed barnwood on the outside, and I will tell you, it is a difference between the one that's next to them that uses the same mix-and-match siding that every single one uses. So I want to see the re-legalization of duplexes, triplexes, quads, and small apartments, and I want to have strong design standards so that these buildings feel like the community that we live in. Now, we're a city of neighborhoods, and I want to see each neighborhood be a 15-minute center. And that requires good freight routes to bring the goods to you so that you can walk there. I'm excited for this major update to the comprehensive plan, and I thank you for listening tonight.
Excellent. Now, Mr. Hanning.
Thank you. I share in many of the goals of the panel up here, and I really, you know, I started off talking about making sure that we do have vibrant communities in these 15-minute walksheds, and allowing for commercial enterprise and small retail within our communities is really important. But we also need to acknowledge, so my mom lives on industrial land, and she lives in a caretaker space. So we also have to acknowledge that there are other tools, there's other things that we can do to help alleviate some of this housing stock. She not only lives in a commercial space, Andrew's been there, she lives in D7, but she also has two roommates. So cohousing, these are things that we can do together. I spent most of my life in cohousing when I was living with my mom, and then in most of my 20s and 30s. The other area in which I am really curious if we can increase some housing is on our waterways, our liveaboards, our houseboats. Is there excess? Can we add some more housing there? Those are really important communities as well, and sometimes we forget about them. Along the Westlake Corridor, along the Ship Canal, over there in Golden Gardens, we have a lot of communities that live on our waterways, and we should look to increase that as some of our housing stock.
Awesome. Well, thank you very much. First of all, a round of applause for all of our participants tonight. So first of all, thank you for all of your answers. Some, you know, I've been where you guys are, and for Some of you know I've been where you guys are, and for those of you who are running for reelection, I know y'all have been here before, too. So, I just, again, I've said this at least several times, but I'll say it again, thank you for coming out tonight and thank you for, for those who run for reelection, for your service, and for the candidates, challengers tonight, thank you for putting your hats in the ring and wanting to make a difference in this city. So, a couple of things, there are snacks downstairs, right next to the bathroom, so please feel free to get some snacks on your way out. If those of you who might like to maybe talk to some of the candidates up here and learn a little bit more, that some people are going to go over to Optimism Brewing, but there is going, there's also going to be, yes, and soon to be Stoop. Thank you for that. Oh, sorry. It is, yes, it's now Stoop, yes. So, for those of you that would like to follow up on learning a little bit more about the comprehensive plan and follow up with our coalition is www completecommunitiescoalition.org. But we had a sign-out, sign-in sheet out there, so if you did sign in, great. If you didn't, please make sure you do so. And last but not least, I just want to address something that is going to be on your ballots this November, the Seattle Housing Levy, Prop 1. So, it has been, it has been one of the most effective tools for building affordable housing in the city since 1986, and there will be more information sent out about that. But if people are interested in just doing a little research yourself or even getting involved, you can go to yesforhomes.org for more information. And with that, yeah, that's all. And also, of course, I should add, we are, oh, no, but I'll address that in a second. We are going to have another forum tomorrow featuring the candidates that are not up here tonight in the other districts, so please feel free to join us tomorrow night, same time, same place. And, yeah, we're not going to have any questions from the crowd, if memory serves, tonight. So, again, please feel free to come up, shake the candidates' hands, have, ask them any questions you'd like and/or might seem adopt, well, Stoop, it's Stoop Brewing now, sorry. Oh, my goodness. Seattle is changing. It's changing, y'all. Anyway. And, oh, well, hey. So, oh, guys, 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 so, a couple of things. We're not going to take questions from the audience, we're just gonna wrap it up for a second of time. Second of all, if you're talking about what-- Ah, so, yes, exactly. People can, you can just come up and see if they're gonna go over there to, you know, talk to folks. I know a couple of folks have to go, but you should all still come up anyway and ask questions, maybe get information, find out, you know, where you can learn a little bit more about their campaign from their websites. And, yeah, that's about it. Enough said. Thank you.
Thank you. So, I'm not from your district, but I'm very interested in this whole housing. I'm actually a native of Seattle. I've seen things.